You're on.
All right. I'd like to call to order the April twenty fifth, twenty twenty fourth Columbia Borough Council Meeting. If I have a little call please. Councilperson here, councilperson Kaufman.
Here.
Councilperson Stahl.
Here.
Councilperson Fisher. Councilperson Price.
Here.
Councilperson Murphy.
Here.
Councilperson Bregard. Mayor Look.
Here.
Did anyone want to offer an invocation? If you'd like, please raise your hands for a moment. Eric, would you like to leave some speech?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of executive and information sessions, there were none. Are there any additions, additions to reorganization of the agenda meeting? I'm not aware of anything. No. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as published?
So maybe.
I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stahl, to approve the agenda as published, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Citizen comment, non-agenda items only. Don't have any signups, is there anyone that wanted to speak but did not sign up? All right. Minutes for approval, could I have a motion to approve the Borough Council Meeting minutes for March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four?
Second.
Of a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stahl, to approve the Borough Council Meeting minutes for March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. Are there any questions or comments on those minutes? With that, I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stahl, to approve the Borough Council Meeting minutes for March twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to approve the Borough Council Workshop Minutes for April second, twenty twenty four?
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stahl, to approve the Borough Council Workshop Minutes for April second. Any questions, comments? Concerned, can't see anything, all right. And I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stahl, to approve the Borough Council Workshop Minutes for April second, twenty twenty four, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Presentation and acceptance of reports, I would like to acknowledge the finance reports for March twenty twenty four. And also the twenty twenty four quarter one lean report. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns?
For the lean reports? Are we, I'm looking at the ones that are really, really, really old, especially like Doug Daisley, who we know passed away, and I have no idea where his wife's at. Are we looking at taking any action on them any time in the future, or just, you know?
We've discussed this several times.
I'm glad we got the big ones.
I think the, I forget the percentage Evan, but majority of the money due to the borough has been collected in these few big ones. Some of these smaller ones Evan and I have talked about.
Yeah, I would say we've collected, I believe when we started this, the outstanding AR that was due to you was around thirty one thousand or so. We've collected well over two thirds of that at this point, largely because of the one large one that you guys saw. So it's a decision that we have to, we'll have to make moving forward. I have some thoughts on it, I want to run some stuff by Mark and maybe we'll.
Yeah, not either the ones that are multiples, but like seventy seven, sixty seven, been there since August twenty fifth, no one even knows.
The only place I struggle is, I want to try to be as consistent as possible. So if we're collecting them, we're collecting them. And.
And we want to be collecting them.
Yeah, we, I don't want to just simply say we've done two thirds, that's good enough and we're done.
I'm just saying, so if you can't find the person who was.
Yeah, but I don't want to spend.
The liens attached to the property, and part of the problem that we've had here is that a number of these properties sold, must have sold either by private sale or something like that where title passed to a new person, but the lien wasn't paid. So that's, you know, that's its own issue, not that it matters really to us because that lien remains collectible and it's not paid. But yeah, we'll work on getting those, because it is, it's difficult sometimes, some of these are so small that the fees and the interest or whatever doubles or triples the amount that's owed because they're so old. So we'll work on that and try to come up with a solution that is fair to everyone and gets the borough as much as possible. Because I think you guys are, you know, you've been out this money regardless of how small, in some cases for upwards of fifteen years at this point, so.
You made a good point when you said the amount to be collected would be far overshadowed by the legal cost to do that, and I understand that. Bottom line, for me, the bottom line is, they owe the borough, they owe the taxpayers the money.
Yep.
You know, so I I would hinge at forgiveness. And quite possibly, you know, it's not really costing anything to have it on the books unless it's a problem, a financial problem with auditing or anything. But send them a notice once a year and say, hey, you know, you know, you owe us this X amount of dollars. They may trip in here.
Yeah, I mean.
The problem is there are some, there are some that are coming up on their twenty years, so they're going to be done. We can't collect them.
Yeah, and that's one thing to, you know, that we've got to be aware of. But we, I'll tell you, we, when we first got these accounts, we did send reminder letters essentially to a lot of these people and that definitely shook some things loose and got us paid a little bit, so.
Is it legal to publish them?
I'm sorry, this is public, and they are public record, they're all.
They're public record now.
On the court, they're all at the courthouse, so.
No, no, I mean.
Put it in the paper, like.
Yeah, but they're in the finance.
They're buried, yeah.
I mean, no, these are, no, they're its own separate lien report.
That's what I'm saying, but they're in a package report, finance package report. I'm talking about pulling them out and saying.
Put them in the newspaper.
Yeah, run an ad in the newspaper, you see below.
There is, as far as I know, there's nothing.
Sometimes shame will be.
Sure.
You just have to be careful of the Fair Deck Collections Practices Act, but I don't know that that would violate that, I'd have to look at it, but yeah. Yep. But yeah, these are, I mean.
I mean, you can do it even in the form of, here's a, out front, out front of minutes of the agenda. Here's, here's a mist, you pull it out of the packet, here's a mist of unpaid money.
Yep.
And you have that mist right out front, where, not where people have to go and look in this, you know, go through, start paying through the line.
But certainly it was good to get those large ones taken care of, that's a, that's a big, big step towards getting these done, so.
All right, are there any other questions, comments, or concerns on the financial report? Um, legislation.
Just acknowledge receipt of the April legislation report, the council.
Any questions on that?
And we are working on moving along, trying to get the news in its order and especially.
Good. And I would like to acknowledge the resignation of Park Fisher from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Thank you, Park, for your service. And we are still looking for people for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, so if anyone's interested, give us a shout, give Liz Andrews a shout, we can get people seated on the board.
Did I see where their, as meetings canceled?
Oh, that is the one.
To me. To me.
Yeah.
Oh, that's why.
Yeah, it wasn't.
My question was, was it canceled because of non-intent?
No, we had it canceled. All right. We don't have any presentations, but Mayor Look has two proclamations for us.
Yeah, I'll take care of the first one, the Arbor Day proclamation, I'm going to read that tomorrow night at Arbor Day, so I'm not going to read it here, it's in suspense. I know you really want to hear it, so you'll come down at six o'clock, you'll come across Arbor Day. The other one, before I read this other proclamation, it's so fitting, and I kind of gave a preview, I kind of gave a preview of it last Friday after the cleanup. The folks, and I read it, but because I thought it was very appropriate, I'm going to read it again. But before I do, I want to personally thank especially Chief Rummer, Cam Armold, who did a lot of the work putting that cleanup together, and all our staff, office staff, public works staff, who assisted us with that. It was a great turnout, Chief tells me he thinks it was somewhere over eighty people involved in that. And as I said last Friday, one of the, one of the things that I look at when we have events like that is, are they growing? The numbers are growing, each year since we've been doing that, we have had more volunteers come out. And I think everybody had a good time. So that's really great, it's a shame that the weather wasn't very cooperative for the event later on that day outside Savage there, Arbor Day, but I think, I think it turned out for that also. So with that said, let me read this proclamation. Whereas National Volunteer Week is an opportunity to recognize and honor the countless individuals who actively volunteer their time, talent, and energy to improve our community and make Columbia Borough a better place. And whereas National Volunteer Week was enacted in nineteen seventy four by President Nixon to designate a special time to recognize and celebrate the contributions of volunteers. And whereas volunteer service is an important component of Columbia Borough, the Borough Community that helps to address social, economic, cultural, and humanitarian needs. And whereas in the past year, many volunteers found innovative ways to spread joy and meet the emotional, physical, and spiritual needs of others. And whereas each year, a special week is designated in our nation for the purpose of recognizing those who give of themselves and as a reminder that giving back to the community creates a cycle that strengthens the community, and the borough wants to say, thank you very much to all individuals, groups, and businesses who have given time, energy, and resources to the community through volunteer service. So now therefore I Leo Look, Mayor of the Borough of Columbia, to hereby proclaim the week of April twenty first through twenty seventh, two thousand, twenty twenty four, as National Volunteer Week in the Borough of Columbia. We encourage everyone in the borough to thank volunteers that they know and appreciate their efforts. And that's so true about Columbia, you know? We are so blessed with the many volunteer organizations and volunteers, whether they be organizations or individuals that help make Columbia what it is today. I don't think we would be here what we are if it weren't for the volunteers. So that's all I have, I'm impressed, thank you.
And to tailgate on that, Mr. Mayor, I promised them that I would give a shout out Friday morning. I was in my bedroom getting ready for work, and I heard kids going down Ninth Street, and I looked out and thought, why aren't these kids in school? And every one of them had gloves on and a trash bag, and they were picking up trash. And I yelled out, I said, are you from Taylor Middle School? And they said, yes, we are. So I wanted to give a shout out, I was very impressed to see Taylor, Taylor kids out there.
Taylor and Park.
And Park, good. Well, Park didn't do it by my house.
But I'm glad you said that, but I wasn't real sure what all they did. I knew they were working the block around the school, but I wasn't sure what all they did.
They went the whole way down and came the whole way back up on both sides of mine.
Great, that's wonderful.
Yeah. Action items, the first action item we have is a hard certificate of appropriateness. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness? So move.
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stahl, to approve the certificate of appropriateness for twelve South Fifth Street to replace doors and windows, replace siding and roof, wrap exposed wood surfaces with aluminum, repaint brick surfaces and trim. And the note from CARP says the conditions are the downspout and millwork replacements must remain the same, half-round front and downspout, and contoured millwork on the exterior surfaces. No wrapping of wood, sills, headers, or the main window due to the significance of altering the character defining features, including molding profiles. So that's what we are, we are approving it with those conditions. Are you the applicant? I thought so, did you want to go up if you have any questions for us? Okay, does anyone have any questions? I thought it was pretty.
I will say this, I hope you guys, if you didn't take a moment and read the staff report, this is the first one that we received from the trust. And knowing that I wrote some of the old ones, it's a marked improvement to what we're getting. You can tell the experts wrote it, so it's, it's good to see that level of quality review coming in.
Yeah. All right, if there's no questions or comments, then I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman and a second by councilperson Stahl to approve the certificate of appropriateness for twelfth South Fifth Street to replace doors, replace siding and roof, wrap exposed woods, or, I'm sorry, not graphics. So it's going to be, an emotion by councilperson Kaufman and a second by councilperson Stahl to approve the certificate of appropriateness for twelfth South Fifth Street to replace doors and windows, replace siding and roof, and repaint brick surfaces and trim, with the conditions stipulated by CARP, which are the downspout and millwork replacements remain the same, half-round front and downspout, and contoured millwork on exterior surfaces. No wrapping of wood sills, headers, or the main window due to the significance of altering the character defining features, including molding profiles. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, and I have this, if you want to come sign it, and I believe, Paula, do you have the permit and stuff?
Yes.
Oh, he hasn't, okay. All right. All right, thank you, and then they'll make sure you get a copy of this. Next, do I have a motion to authorize the Borough Attorney to advertise the sale of Borough-owned land located on the east side of Blue Lane and at seven forty South twelfth Street?
Does that place though correctly?
Oh, Blue Lane, thank you.
Yeah, lane, not land.
Blue Lane land.
Blue Lane, I didn't, I didn't even notice it, I just skipped right through.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stahl to authorize the Borough Attorney to advertise the sale of Borough-owned land located on the east side of Blue Lane and at seven forty South twelfth Street. Questions, comments?
Will that be advertised through the auction company? Yeah, they're going to help with that.
Yeah, they will be advertising, we have to advertise in the newspaper. But they, I know that they are already putting out, you know, marketing material, but this is a separate legal requirement that we have.
Understood, thanks.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? No, not here, none, I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stahl to authorize the Borough Attorney to advertise the sale of the Borough-owned land located on the east side of Blue Lane and at seven forty South twelfth Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Next, could I have a motion to approve the bill payments?
Second.
A motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stahl to authorize the bill payments. Are there any questions on these, I didn't see anything that caused me to question it. Nothing? All right, and seeing none, I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stahl to authorize the bill payments, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, say then, Bill. Do it. I have a couple of special event applications, could I have a motion to approve the special event application for AIPJ Emanuel Inc. Church to host an evangelist campaign with music and preaching in Locust Street Park on Friday, July fourth, twenty twenty four, and Saturday, July or, I'm sorry, Friday, July fifth, twenty twenty four, and Saturday, July sixth, twenty twenty four, from four to ten P M. each day.
So council's aware, Locust Street Park is owned by Old Columbia, but they're asking for the parking along Fifth Street and Locust Street locked off for this event, therefore it affects us as a restriction in the public right of.
I was going to say, just to be clear, you're not necessarily then approving
We're not approving the use of the park.
You're just approving the restrictions.
Acknowledging the event and approving the restriction of the street.
So maybe what I, maybe the motion should be, a motion to approve the special event application for AIPJ Emanuel Inc. Church to block off the parking lanes of South Fifth and five hundred block of Locust Street.
For the purpose of.
For the purpose of an event they are holding in Locust Street Park on Friday, July fifth, twenty twenty four, and Saturday, July sixth, twenty twenty four, from four to ten each day. How's that sound?
That's better.
Who's the motion?
Second.
The motion by councilperson Kaufman and a second by councilperson Stahl.
If you have a question, normally if we want to block off parking, we just go to the police and.
But because this is tied to a special event, I, kind of my.
Is this going to block the parking or is this going to use the parking spaces for their parking?
Yes. What, I think the way it's meant to be is parking for the especially event.
It says on here, no parking signs.
They want no parking signs on those two streets, they don't want anyone to block them from being seen, is why I took it. They want, they want to restrict parking on those two streets for that time period.
Okay, well, I'm glad this was, was done because things like parking there, we don't want, we don't want our officers to assume that they're there for the event.
Right.
They just don't want to block view.
That's my understanding, they want no parking signs put up, yeah, I will verify that with them.
Yeah.
I'll get Pam to check.
I think I would like to make it contingent upon the proof that they have approval from Old Columbia Public Grounds, because if they don't, if they end up not getting the approval and then we put no parking signs up, you know, that's a holiday weekend, that's not really.
Yeah, I was thought they got that first.
I'm impressed, that's a real good suggestion, but I don't want to see any, but it may be restricted, but at ten P M. it kind of I don't know what the Old Columbia Public Grounds, I say that's out of the new.
Right.
How long is it going to affect the residents, especially on Locust Street?
Yeah. Could I just offer a suggestion and maybe we hold off on this, let's get some more information on this, just don't take action tonight, let me get, get Pam to follow up with them, because I want to make sure we understand what we're approving before we do it and then end up with unintended consequence.
Yeah.
Can we just motion to table it now?
Yes, you can always motion.
Well, this is under new business, you can decide not to take action tonight.
Oh, yeah, that's where, oh, shoot, I didn't even need a motion. Now I got a motion, but now we're going to have to motion to table it. I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman to table this.
Second.
And a second by councilperson Stahl to table it until such time as we have more information.
That's a good move, Mark, if I'm correct. This is the out, this is the organization that originally wanted to shut four hundred block of Locust Street down. And we also, their church is right next to the State Theater.
Oh.
Yeah.
And the chief was trying to convince them, I'm surprised he convinced them to use our parks rather than our streets.
Right.
Yes, I think it is.
So I think there's more details that need to be worked out.
Yeah, I agree.
Can we also recommend to them during this, you know, another week or two they're going to have to do this, that they go to the Old Columbia Public Grounds and at least get, they could come back with, hey, we got their approval, it would really, it would really help the decision.
That's a good thought, Kelly, I'll make sure the chief, I'll see them, I'll see them this night, see you guys tomorrow.
Yep, we will. Yeah. Yeah, so I'm just going to leave that in here, Mark, and we can get more information on that.
Yeah.
And next, I'm not going to ask for motion on this one, we have a special event application for Ashley Cabernacle, C O G I C, to close South Fifth Street from Avenue K to Union Street and Union Street to Avenue N, allowing Union Street open for traffic in both directions for a block party slash yard sale slash health food slash food garden on Saturday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty four, from ten A M. to five P M. There's a whole lot going on in that.
This is the same question, right?
Yeah.
So if we don't have annual event, I would feel comfortable.
Yeah, I would too. Anyone else?
Yep.
It says, repeat, many years.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman and a second by councilperson Stahl to approve the special event application for Ashley Cabernacle, C O G I C, close South Fifth Street from Avenue K to Union and Union Street to Avenue N on Saturday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty four, from ten A M. to five P M.
And just to be clear, you want them to get in the motion, but Union Street stays open, they just block it that way, Union stays open?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, we have a recommendation from Parks and Rec Advisory Board regarding the Town Square Park. And Liz is here, do you want to tell us about this, Liz, or?
I'm fully booked for the recommendation, but I have to follow up.
Yeah, I just have to scroll down through my packet. I have one question, if, we're getting the recommendation tonight, why's the work already been done? I, I have one question. If, we're getting the recommendation tonight. Why's the work already been done?
Yeah, I was wondering, because I saw the video of the fountain as we were going earlier today. So I found that interesting, but I wasn't sure if this was still needed or was going on.
I, I, we weren't aware either.
I didn't, I didn't know, but it would be broken up tonight before all the members come.
And there's a, you let the the sentence in there says, don't keep a list of labor and time from now until next spring, at which time you'll submit to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Does that mean for compensation? Like what?
No, just a log so that the borough would have an idea of what it takes to maintain a park and the volunteer hours it takes to maintain a park.
So...
I think it's just right.
It is. They want-
I'm just confused as to why that would be-
Why we recommended it?
No, why, why we need to have a law of this and that, because I mean, we already knew what the park rangers, what time they spend and everything in our parks and-
It was a, it was a result of what Peter had brought up, Nora spoke here. That he wanted to know how much they were actually planning to work there just in case it fell back into our hands.
I think-
And that's expected to happen after a year. It should come after a year.
I think to clarify-
Yeah.
It was in regards to the comment that I made, I think was in regards to the pump and the fountain, whether it was gonna be maintained.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It was more or less asking for them to commit to, commit and have a schedule of people who are going to take care of it
Right.
for us to approve moving forward to keep the fountain. If we're gonna put money and sort of time into it.
Right.
Not necessarily in, not a time sheet, but how long are you gonna take care of it?
But, I mean, it sounds like it's only gonna be a year, and then it falls back to us.
Well, it sounds like maybe it was a, there was a misunderstanding.
Yeah.
I think after a year, it will be, not that it would be put back into us, but that we would have an idea of what it took.
That's just, Liz just said, it would fall back to you for a year.
Yeah, I, I didn't get that in my head.
Right, so they expected to maintain it for the year and give us the data. And not that, um, they would still have volunteers interested in assisting, maintaining it and, and continuing on and even suggest it expanding to other parks, but they're not there yet, so they figured this is a good part of that.
Yeah, I think that's why, is Nora pretty much saying she personally will commit for a year.
Wait, I think that three-year review was for the fountain. They wanted us to keep the fountain up for another year, because you remember, we, we, we agreed with the recommendations to get rid of it, and they're saying, let us just do this for a year, we'll keep track of everything, cost and everything in maintenance, bring it back to you, and then you can decide if you're gonna remove the fountain or not. In other words, give them a chance of this fountain for a year.
Well, it's my understanding that that's what tonight's meeting was for, is for you guys to, to maul it over what, what was presented and make a decision tonight, if you wanna go ahead and re-energize the fountain and do it and try it for a year. That was, that's how I left the meeting, thinking it was a, just think about it, talk about it, we'll bring it back. You brought the recommendation back from Parks and Rec, and tonight was supposed to be the night where we make that decision.
Today, I was scrolling through what I already read.
Yeah. I found out-
It doesn't matter which night. Can I read this email? Did you all get the email from Nora?
No, she asked me not to share it, so I didn't.
No, not to show her address.
Oh. Oh, I misheard that. I, I thought she said not to share the email. Sorry.
Not to show the address. She wrote, I just wanted to personally share that, well, I didn't send the video, I think you know. My husband, Michael, works very hard over the last week or so repairing things, internal tubes and mechanisms, installing new pump and electrical connections, et cetera, and with water graciously supplied from the neighbor. What's that about? Got the fountain pumping yesterday. We're doing like, a neighbor is putting water? I think that didn't make sense to me.
They probably probably didn't turn it on yet.
Oh, okay.
It's already on. It's, the, the, there's not a continuous source of water there. You fill the bottom basin and it just circulates it.
Oh.
Yeah, there's a faucet right under it.
Yeah, but that's, 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 that faucet isn't directly feeding the fountain, which is the whole discussion we've been having for a couple of years now, is how do we keep the water in there?
Okay, so that's the update about the fountain. And they, they do know that we could go and say we still wanna remove the fountain and all their work will be in vain, but they're hoping that we would allow them to work with it for a year and then, or next spring, and then revisit it and decide.
So what, what she said, Barbara, I just, that's what I said. She said, please kindly do not share my email to all of council tonight. Yeah, not her address. He said, please do not share the email. That's why, that's why I had, I'm like, did I read that wrong? So-
Are they committing to the fountain or to the town square?
The town square, including the fountain, for a year, and then they also said that Create Columbia set aside five hundred dollars towards town squares upkeep and where the town is sourced. They, they told us at the meeting we had for Parks and Rec, they expected to have it up in running by May. At our Parks and Rec, we assumed it would be, we would bring the recommendation to you and go from there, but things moved a little faster.
Is it gonna be under the auspices of the Parks and Rec or someone under approval?
Or Create Columbia.
Create Columbia, basically, and they will report to us.
No.
It has to be under Park and Rec.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not-
Yeah, for insurance reasons alone, it needs, the, the borough owns the park, it needs to be-
They're, they're welcome to create a list of the volunteers.
Yep.
And there's always your oversight of it. They're welcome to do what they want. But anything that associated that park actually goes to Parks and Rec.
Well, and at this point, I, I'm really hesitant to even allow that, because they've already run over Parks and Rec and did the wrong thing.
I, I don't think they did it.
You still-
But, well, they did. They, it's already, it's all running before we even got to consider it.
Just the timing, but we knew everything they were going to do.
I understand.
But it's still our property that we have to approve this fountain.
And there you go. You don't have to have to work.
They knew you were voting on it, yes, tonight.
But just because we're voting on it doesn't mean it's a done deal.
And I'm saying it. And I'm saying it.
You know, and I, I mean, I just, to me, that just is I mean, we, we have, we have people out there that don't get permits to do things, and we sit here and we have to, we have to penalize them for not following protocol, and now we're doing the same thing to ourselves. We're not following, we're not following protocol because the work wasn't approved.
The work? Or do you mean the fountain?
The fountain. It, it didn't, wasn't approved that we were going to-
And just the fountain, but they knew that. They knew that they could get it up and running, and we could vote to make it still have to be removed.
Right.
Maybe they thought it was a curse.
They, they exactly did.
It's Aaron Barry doing something to just rebuild.
Exactly. That's exactly what they did.
But as far as-
And to me, that's dirty.
As far as the planting and the mauling and all of that things, I'm glad Peter's here. They're taking it over and they're replacing all their faults and they're mounting faults and keeping the place out.
I think you, you put, Parks and Rec, that's a part of Parks and Rec, Town Square Park.
Yep.
So, it, all you can say is Parks and Rec is gonna handle it and say, give you a, a year-end report.
But if the people are running over Parks and Rec and doing what they want, that's not good.
That, it's not good. That's Park and Rec's job.
I think we have to give up the Parks and Rec direction and say, well, this is your park. You control it.
Yeah, and if you're gonna expend money, it has to come through here.
Yeah.
Yes, and they did. They had that.
Well, technically, it was approved by Parks and Rec.
Right.
Beforehand, and-
No. Parks and Rec doesn't have the authority to approve it.
But they do, it didn't spend any of our money.
Right, but they, if, if that doesn't matter, they make recommendations, they're on the advisory board. They make recommendations and we have to approve, like our. We just approved our. They've said, we recommend you approve it and approve it.
Like, it would be more egregious if it was an entire change, like a bigger, a bigger fountain. But they repaired the pump. So we could still vote to turn the water off permanently and remove access, you know, so, to save money if we wanted to.
Well, we still need the-
It was a repair. It wasn't like, I mean, as far as the permit, the permit, you know, it, it was a repair and not like a new construction.
I think, I think what the head is trying to say is, if they went up there and removed all the trees without permission
Right.
and said, you know, this, this is our new game plan.
That would be a problem.
Right. And, and this is where we're saying, hey, this is Parks and Rec's park. And, and, and they control it, they run it, and if they have volunteers assisting them, that's great.
Right.
And they wanna do anything with capital expense, they come back to us, I think. And who is, who writes to know that, know if properties had, had a new fountain on order? Or something like that. Right, that's, and, and money is not the only concern. I mean, to be honest with you, when you start working on pumps, right, you've got water next to electricity. If somebody had gotten electrocuted, guess who's getting sued? The owner of the park, which is us. That's, that's, you know, you have to think about that kind of stuff if you haven't approved that person to do that.
So then after something like that takes place, should there be an inspector to go out to make sure that everything was put in properly?
I don't know all of what was done just based on that email, but, I mean, anytime somebody works with electrical, who do you call? Call the law code, right?
This to me is a bit hairy, because they, they didn't actually change any of the wiring. The, the pump just plugs into an outlet that's already there.
Yeah, well, exactly. There wasn't that one.
Yeah, it's, that's already installed, and that's what the inspector would look at. I, I'll say this, it, it looks nice. It does. It's, it's, it looks nice to have it back on. I feel like the process got a little in front of us. If we wanna authorize, if you guys want to authorize the Park and Rec Board to take a leadership and, and maintain this park and any expenses, come back to you, then make that as a formal motion and, and give them that authority to do that and let them take it. I think it, I think it should be a formal action that you guys take to, to give them, give Liz and her team that, that authority to, to do the general maintenance. If there's any costs, it has to come back to us for approval.
So what recourse do we have, though, if we give Liz and her team this authority and someone else runs over her, which is clearly what happened now? Because she was not aware that the fountain was gonna be turned on and that that was all done at this point, this early. So what recourse do we have when someone runs over her authority? That's, I wanna protect her.
Right. I'm just, I'm just going off what Eric was saying.
Someone mentioned Harbaugh a while ago. It's just like Harbaugh, remove your stuff.
To me, I agree, I agree with what Peter said. It's kind of like when, to answer your question about, um, how could they, I forget what it was, a facility request or something. She said, they're already set up, they're already set, but we didn't agree, but how could that happen? And you said, well, maybe we just have to take it down. And I think that's where we are tonight. They put up the fountain, they knew we were gonna vote on it tonight. We can still vote and say we want it removed, or the recommendation of Parks and Rec was that we let them go with it until keep a running tab of everything, and then in spring, submit that running tab, and then we'll see. But, I mean, you don't have to do a re-recommend. We can, it's up to-
But it needs to be known, those who did this, that's not the way Columbia does it.
Right.
Exactly.
So Liz, can I ask you, is that, do you want that authority as a chair of this board, or do you, would you rather have council making those decisions and you just carry them out?
I believe that there's definitely a financial request with the county council.
Right.
I was surprised today to see that was already up and running. When we left with the meeting, they said by the end of May. Um, I was under the belief that it would come from whatever was decided at this meeting moving forward.
Yep.
So I was surprised, but at the same time, I can't say that I'm not in some way glad that it happened, because when we made the previous recommendation about pulling it out, we didn't necessarily have all the information. Why was it put there? What did it mean? Um, I've asked Nora, I believe, and to, I'm not sure, Bart as well, to get a binder together about the park. What is there that means something? Why is it there? Any issues and, and a maintenance log that was already in part of the process of getting asked for. Small things like that, again, that I think Town Square is a good place to start with something like that and, and maybe grow into the other parks.
Yeah, this, this is gonna be a problem. I think everything that- There, there has been discussion amongst this council that repairs are needed up there. Not only the fountain, the bricks need to be pointed, and there's some other work that needs done up there. And I think you all need to be-
We've already approved the brickwork.
The brickwork is authorized by council.
Okay, that's been authorized.
Yeah. It's, they started today.
Okay, okay, 'cause I was gonna say, next thing that's gonna happen is someone's gonna go up and re-point bricks that you didn't know about. They just wanna take off and start running.
And that's what I'm, I'm afraid of.
You're, you're right. You're right.
I would agree that, that I think the authority for any action should remain with council, just as a, a form of, even though no money is there, because you don't know where money might come from. And we, like, we value volunteers, but we also need those decisions to come back through council and for, for Parks and Rec to remain in the advisory board, that's what we call it.
Right. I think I was going also the last meeting, where they talked about volunteers for maintaining the area, weeding some trees and bushes and stuff like that. Yeah, I just, I was saying, but I'm not particularly. And I believe Liz was too saying that, hey, you know, we just talked about volunteer, you know, but people getting involved in this and this stuff as well, maybe you give a volunteer for other parks as well.
And the park rangers already go around and maintain stuff, and we don't approve each one, each work section they do.
Yeah, I agree with that. Just give them some money.
Yeah. Not just money, but changes.
That'd be a good truth.
Yeah. Changes.
I mean, the park rangers-
Repairs and changes.
Right, the park rangers are doing mauling and weeding. They're not re-pointing brick or-
Pulling bushes out and removing trees.
So just because they changed to get the fountain repaired, doesn't necessarily mean they had to plant lunch because they had like-
Right.
And then they, Eric.
Even, even the, it was a memorial garden with all the flowers, all those bulbs that were planted, and that's a feature. So like, to make sure those don't just get pulled out without, without knowledge, without a discussion.
So, um, I'm sorry, the woman who's saying the week after we asked for the fountain removal to come explain what all of that meant.
Nora started, yeah.
It's, that's the thing. I thought there was another woman involved.
That was Nora.
They intend to keep that design towards the memorial that was losing it for a second.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. And I'm not saying, I, I don't know that we, Mark, I don't know that we have to, um, make a motion to authorize Parks and Rec to have authority. I think, I have a part, a committee that's part of the office system.
Well, no, we have to approve their recommendations.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I mean, they're recommending-
What I'm saying is, uh, what I'm saying is there's a group volunteer to do cleanup. Parks and Rec should be allowed to prove.
Yes.
And they have authority over them as far as, are you getting changes without us coming back to council?
Right.
For twenty some, twenty some years-
Sure.
For twenty some years, the town gardeners took care of that Town Square. Any repairs, turning the water on or- Any repairs, turning the water on, or whatever have you, anything that had to do in the area of maintenance, they came to the borough and asked the borough to have someone come out and fix it. The, uh, the electrical boxes and all, uh, remember that, Wilson, we did those and all, they, they came to the borough and said, there's, this, this needs fixed. Right. And the same thing happens down at Columbia Crossing, this needs fixed, we maintain it, but this needs fixed, the borough doesn't. Now, someone wants to donate money, or donate the work, then it's up to you to approve.
Right.
I don't know if I so much agree that we need a schedule, or we need to know who's mowing and who's doing the rest.
No, 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 I'm not saying, I'm not saying a schedule, I'm, I'm just saying, if you've got volunteers, send somebody else. Parks and Rec should be aware of, 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 of Parks and Rec.
Right, and if Parks and Rec isn't aware of it, that's a problem.
Uh-huh.
That's what I'm saying.
Yep, and that's, that's what I'm saying, Bill.
But any meeting, these comes through you.
Well, when, when the park rangers go in to clean up, make a park, they hope that Parks and Rec think they're there. I mean, out of courtesy, you know.
We have to talk to them on courtesy.
Right. But they're not.
We, we appreciate all the volunteers, it's not that we don't appreciate it.
Right, I mean, they, they make us aware when they give us their schedule of what park they're doing when.
But do they give us all their schedule? Because I know Robin gave me a schedule, I, I gave it to Mark to put on the government page, but I don't know if we officially got one. No, they're.
I get official things, so.
I just think that's being too much of a nanny.
But they're not.
They're not making substantive changes.
They're not making substantive changes, they're picking up, picking up sticks and weeds and everything.
That's what I'm talking about, mowing, planting.
The maintenance, but I'm concerned that Town Square, that group may, may be under the impression that they have more authority, and they might start removing some of the shrubs and trees and saying, listen, we want to re-landscape it, we don't like this look, we're going to do it differently, and, and Monday morning you can come out there and it's going to be completely changed, and council and, and Parks and Rec didn't know about, and I think that's what we're.
And we'll see it on social media.
Yeah, that's what we want to make sure, that, that maintenance type items that the park rangers do is way different than changes to the parks that weren't authorized. And it's not, to me, it's not a, a need for control, it's a need for being responsible of our land.
Being responsible for our assets.
Yeah, like, when we redid Columbia Crossing, council approved us going in there and doing all the replanting and everything.
So Wilson, how often does someone go to the main school up to Town Square and you just, and do your thing up there? Like, we would notice that if there was something going on that was dramatically changing for the landscape.
It's not a regular, it's not a regular thing. I mean, we go up there, we empty, empty garbage, and we have to just sit right in the container, the bucket container, um. That's weak.
Yeah, but we are doing. So if you notice something.
A lot of damage been done in this.
I don't know, I just don't think intent is, I don't know, I, I guess I just, I don't know.
I don't think anybody's saying, compared to damage per set.
No.
It's just one person's opinion, of how something's to look compared to somebody else's. It's our opinion, Matt.
Right.
Who created, who created that Town Square park?
The borough.
Was it the borough council, or was it the town gardeners?
We got it. We got it, granted.
Yeah, the purchase move.
The purchase.
The borough got the grant.
Yes, and, and then, CDDC.
Paul Nicklaus downed down the building.
Yeah.
And when it was.
The CDDC.
Pretty personally. They, they got, uh, Paul Nicholas designed it, and volunteers and donors, people, no, borough people, construction. But Paul Nicholas did the designing.
I think that's, I think that's perfect, I think that's the way communities should be, where people, if laborers have responsibility.
But like I said, do the maintenance, weeding, and that's, you do the maintenance, any, any repairs, I think that, that comes down to the borough.
I agree with that.
Repairs, changes.
Yeah, when the water, when, you know, if you have, for example, uh, last year, you were asked, we had to get, uh, brought a tree expert in, do some work on the trees. You know, the, the, uh, town gardeners didn't do that, the town gardeners said, hey, you need to get somebody in here to take a look at the trees.
I, I just, you know, before we go down the resolution, I just want to make sure this is clear, clear, because I want to, I want to make sure I represented them correctly. They weren't aware, like, they could do create Columbia, refreshing the place, ball, some multi, stuff like that. As far as the count, the county is concerned, they knew we had already, we had already agreed with us to remove the fountain. They came, then we heard the big story, they came back again, and then we said, um, they stood up, getting this one up and running, you know, seeing how it goes, and we said that they could go ahead and do that, but we, there's still a vote to remove it, and so we need to bring this recommendation back to council, and council then would vote whether we want to still remove the fountain or keep it up. So I just want to make sure that's, that's real clear, they were aware of that, we were aware of that, and we're aware of that.
Okay. So I rescind my previous, previous, uh, motion.
Well, we don't have a motion.
I thought I did.
No, we don't have a motion.
Okay.
We're, we're just considering it's new business.
Can I make a motion now?
Yeah.
I'd make a motion, yeah, for the next, year or whatever, that we keep the fountain in place like this.
Is there a second?
Oh, second, no.
The motion by Councilperson Kaufman, and a second by Councilperson Stahl, to approve to keep the fountain in Town Square Park in place for a year. Questions, comments, concerns?
I would like to hear a, a legitimate argument as to why we would need to remove it.
Well, I personally am not willing to commit to a year, because if there's problems with it, and something, i- if there's problems with the fountain there, and we end up having kids playing in it, or this and that and the other thing, and something gets broken, I don't want to be bound to have to maintain it for a year, just because that's what we said at this meeting.
Well, then.
I, I really worry about.
Can we remove it a year?
Change the wording, I just think, we're on the term now, we give it, they ask for a year, file whatever, see how close they're in.
Keep them, keep it until further notice.
Could we go until, like, October, November, and then, when we have to.
Then we're going, because then it's going to be.
Those are back to school.
Now, that's fine, yeah, I, I was just trying to give the timeframe. Yeah, I, I go with that, I really don't change the motion.
So we'll change the motion to, um, authorize the fountain to remain in Town Square Park in operation until further notice.
You got a problem, a year.
You want to say until September? Maybe, you don't want to say until September?
I personally don't want to say until September, because.
Further notice is fine.
Because i- in two months, you, when we got people diving off of it, knocking it down and breaking it.
All right, until further notice.
And further notice is actually longer than a year, so.
It could be, it could be longer than a year.
I'll take it.
It's open-ended.
Or not more than a, if you really want to secure this, until further notice, but not more than a year.
Not to exceed. Not to exceed.
Not to exceed a year. Okay, give it to me. All right, so I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, and a second by Councilperson Stahl, to approve the fountain to remain in operation in Locust Street Park.
Town Square Park.
Town Square Park, until further notice, not to exceed one year.
May I offer a friendly amendment?
Hold on, I'm already silent.
All repairs, and all, all, all necessary repairs will be reported this way.
Yes.
By?
By Parks and Rec.
Prior to.
Prior to completion.
Yeah.
Of, part of completion of the repairs.
Just by saying, just by saying it's going to be managed, that's, that's a license to keep on putting stuff into it.
Well, right, and I, I hesitate, I, I'm really, I have to say, I'm really torn, because I really worry about Liz getting run over.
Well, I think.
And things getting out of her hands, and, I mean.
If you feel like you're being taken advantage of or ran over, please, Mark, or come back to council, you'll have us for it.
I, I do appreciate them giving the other one behind it, but I do agree, um, I was like, that I wasn't expecting to see that running already, um. I don't know, it may be a letter from council, in addition to Parks and Rec's awards, either for Columbia or any individual specifically would help, um, just trying to realign that, we appreciate the enthusiasm and the forward work together, but it's got to be in the right order.
You can do that.
I don't think creating Columbia to the fountain, that was more than a.
Right, right, I, I would say, keep it, like, all the volunteers. You can, you know, that's legal, but just by my.
All right. Are there any other comments or concerns or anything?
I have one other comment, when people started, like, dragging off or doing laundry, and another suggestion would be put it higher, but then I'm making people climb, so I don't know how, how you can. But also, um, it would help it be more visible, if people drag them by, because it's kind of tucked in there, and unless you're right on it, you don't really know, or if you catch the silhouette, you can see it, but, just lifting it could be another helpful solution, so both visibility and.
Not some of the stuff, not to beat this any further, but one of the things we talked about is if we're keeping the fountain, do we want to get a bigger one, do we want to change it? So let's say, let, let's this one ride for a year, see how it does.
That's not in the budget for this year?
I want to go on record, it's not in the budget for this year.
Exactly.
Maybe next year, Liz.
Maybe.
But it's got to, you got to bring it to me, bring it to the table.
All right, so, we have a motion, we have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, and a second by Councilperson Stahl, to approve the fountain to remain in Town Square Park and operational until further notice, not to exceed one year, to be reviewed at that time, with the understanding that any repairs or changes need to be brought before Borough Council for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? All right.
I think I just sent the record for the longest motion you've ever read.
Hold on, I needed a drink there on that one, but, all right, next, oh, good, the next two are easy. We have Resolution 2024-16 to appoint Nathan Bunty as school member of the zoning hearing board, um, uh, um, what's his name, Steve White, thank you, I'm struggling with words sometimes. Steve White, um, we were, we acknowledged his resignation as he moved down to the area, we thank him for his service. Um, we do have an alternate, which is Nate Bunty, um, so we have a resolution to appoint him as school member, to fill that, to fill that vacancy, and we're still advertising then for alternates for the zoning hearing board.
Mark, do you see that his reservation, you have Nathan Bunty?
I, yes, I was going, about to say that, I, I.
It is correct.
Jane said I corrected, the, the official one Heather has, has been corrected, thank you, then.
Yeah, that was the first thing I looked at. Um, does anyone have a problem voting on this one tonight? No, all right, who wants to make a motion?
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilperson Murphy, and a second by Councilperson Stahl, to adopt Resolution 2024-16, appoint Nathan Bunty as school member of zoning hearing board, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Uh, next, we have Resolution 2024-17, appoint a voting delegate and alternate for the 2024 PSAB conference. Um, at, at this point, um, Mark and I are the only ones that said we were going, um, so one of us should be the voting delegate.
Mark, you raised your hand.
He did, I saw that, I saw that, too.
Yeah, I'm doing it for the county, so I can do it for here, too. All right.
Do you get two votes for that, Heather?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I get two votes, I get two clickers. Two clickers, um, all right, so, I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-17, appoint Heather Zink as voting delegate for the 2024 PSAB annual conference. I don't have, and a second by Stahl. All right, so I have a motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Stahl, to adopt Resolution 2024-17, appointing Heather Zink as voting delegate for the 2024 PSAB annual conference, all in favor? Aye, anyone opposed? All right, oh.
And Mark would be the alternate, I'm just looking at this, at the resolution, it has blank for the voting delegate and blank as the alternate.
Yeah, Mark would be the alternate then.
Okay, I put Heather, I put Heather in as the delegate, if you want to make me alternate, I'll disamend that quick and.
Yeah.
Who did that, so don't sign that one yet.
Um, all right, staff reports, comments, and announcements, let's start, Dan.
Not too much to report, um, I will tell you, I have, I've been looking through the sidewalk ordinance to try to get that ready. I've almost completed my review on that, so hopefully we'll get that here shortly. Also working through some issues, um, with the sale of the wastewater treatment plant, but I think we're getting close there. So I'm hopeful that, that Norfolk Southern still hasn't, um, approved anything, but we're, we're working through some other things. Um, hopeful we're getting over the hump on that, we can get that done soon. So we are continuing to work on a number of fronts, but those are two, two highlights there, so.
Secretary of Treasury, Mr. Slivers. Thank you. Um, just wanted to add my comments and compliments to the team that came out Friday to do the spring cleanup. It wa- it was a joy to be out there with the group, um, Mayor said it well, it's, it's grown every year, and the, the energy that was out there was exciting to be a part of, so it was neat seeing the teams coming together. Neat seeing, you know, you walk down the street and a team goes across the alley this way, another one's heading back up the other way, and carrying bags and, and bragging about how much they found, and, um, it was fun. And lunch down at, at Columbia Crossing was, was just fantastic, and so, um, it was just great to see, see that event. Two, um, several of us, Joanne, Heather, and I, and Mayor, were out Saturday, uh, for the home dedication, uh, for Habitat, oh, and Barb, for Habitat for Humanity Home Dedication. That was, that was a really great event, to see new families coming into town, seeing the almost finished products. I know that they, they wanted to hold the dedication, there's still some work that needs to be done on the, on the properties to get them finalized, but it was, it was a beautiful day and a beautiful time to be out there and see, you know, the, the partnership and the work that comes together to, to make something like that happen. I received an email last week, um, declaring May as Mental Health Month. And what the group is, is asking, um, is in order to raise awareness of Mental Health Month, they're asking for businesses, other communities, to put green lights in windows or doors or something to show support for, you know, this effort. They, they want to basically turn the county green for a month, and, and that, get some support behind. They, they want to basically turn the county green for a month and, and that, get some support behind it. Um, if, if council is, is good with us participating, we'll find a way to add some, some green lights somewhere, um, and become part of this effort. I think it's a, a nice way just to, to partner and contribute of, of what we're trying to accomplish here. You guys okay if we, I say we, if Wilson puts, finds some green bulbs and puts them off somewhere? Put them off in the clock tower. In the clock, in the clock tower. Light all the lights.
You don't have, that's not in the budget. We keep saying it till somebody hears me.
You're going to have to get downstairs in the basement, find some green paper or filter you can put over the bulb, because Tammy won't, maybe you can stick some tape in the budget. That's about it.
No, that's not in the budget.
Ah, you didn't get tape. So two, two big things I want to bring up for us to consider. May 30th of 1949, um, was the day this building was rededicated. So this coming May 30th will be 75 years. It, it's, it's a milestone. Um, it's not quite 100 years yet, but I just think it'd be good if we can do something to celebrate, you know, 75 years since the rededication of this building. I don't know what all to do yet. Uh, we can put the bunting back up on the outside. We can just do something. We can push it out. We can do a social media push. I don't, I'd like to spend a lot of money, but Tammy will say no anyway. Um, not in the budget. But I want to, I want to make sure that that date isn't just passed over. So if anyone has any suggestions, contact me. I think it's worth celebrating 75 years of this building being rebuilt. The other one, which is a little further off, but I think it's, we need to start now, is 2026, um, will be the, get my years right, um. I can't even do math tonight. 1724, John Wright came here. 1726, John Wright established his home here. So it'll be the 300th anniversary of Founder's Day in 2026. I've been approached by some citizens of the community saying they would like to start something now, to put a committee together to begin formulating a Founder's Day, Founder's Week, Founder something celebration. I have Chris Vera doing some research on a date. If we want to try to find something, if not, we can look at, um. Ah, I try.
I know when I first moved here in the early 2000s, they, uh, I think it was '03, maybe, that old home week. That was, that was pretty cool.
Yeah. So we'll look at a, at a date. I don't, I don't know if we have an actual date when they arrived back in 2026 or 1726, but, um, I'd like to get your permission to start putting a, the team together committee, because it takes about two years to plan an event that big and get stuff pulled together. I think it's a great way to celebrate this town and our, our founding history, at least from the Wright family side. Thoughts? You guys good at that? We'll get something together. Um, if any of you want to volunteer to be part of that, just reach out to me and let me know if you want to be part of the team to help pull it together. Um, final thing, since Todd is not here, um, just a reminder, uh, for Text My Gov. I'll, I'll give you a, a good example of why it's important. I was at a meeting two weeks ago, uh, the LMC meeting, and the manager, Rick, from Mainheim Township gave an update. And he goes, have to let you guys know to be prepared for something that's coming. And we're all like, oh, I know the old PGA tour. Yeah, we got it. He goes, no. The weekend before the tour, which the tour is the end of May, beginning of June, the weekend before, which is like the 24th, 25th, PennDOT is shutting down Route 30 at 222 over the weekend, Friday through Sunday, to remove some of the bridge spans. That means all traffic on 30 is going to be, have to be diverted around that stretch of road.
What is it saying?
I know. Um. So I think the, the LPGA starts on May 31st and runs through June something. So it'll be the 24th, 25th, 26th of May, I believe. I'll, I'll verify that and make sure. The week before the event is, is when I believe is currently scheduled for that to be shut down. On a good day, if you're heading eastbound on 30 around 5 o'clock, it backs up.
Home is the Park City.
Past Park City. Oh, no, it's on 30. It's, it's, I've seen it close to Mount Phil exit.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it backs up, and that's just traffic getting through the 22, 322, 20, 283, 30 split area. Yeah. So we just have to be prepared for the fact that during that time, it's not uncommon for people to get impatient and more accidents occur because of the, the slowdown. The other thing that's probably going to happen is if 30 starts backing up, everyone's GPS is going to route them through town. And they're going to get off and come 462 and try to go around, because it will back up to Mount Phil or further, most likely. So Rick asked everyone in the, in the whole corridor to be prepared, uh, for this event. We talked about it at our email meeting today. I'll, I'll try to verify the, the times and make sure that's still on, um, but I think this, we have to be prepared for it. It, it is coming. They're going to have to, in order to remove those spans, um, beginning to take them down, it takes two or three days to have the road shut down. Exactly what we thought. So I'll, I'll, PennDOT always pushes out information. I'll get ahold of them and see if we can get some firm dates and see. But that's why I think us having this tool of Text My Gov is going to be good, because if, if something is starting to happen there, we can kind of at least let our people know, hey, you know, avoid the area. If you don't know, 441 south of the borough is closed right now, um, for that repair of the culvert pipe. I can just see a perfect storm of, you know, things coming in. And we had the one accident here, and I forget when it was, a few months ago, I think it was, and every street in town got backed up. People trying to find shortcuts to get around the accident on 30. It's, it's not the, it's not even the locals I'm worried about. It's the people out of town trying to follow the GPS who's going to route them down through roads they're not familiar with. So just more of a let's be prepared and, and be aware of what's going on. I think that's it. Thank you.
Um, boards, commissions, and committees, upcoming meetings, there are none. Approved minutes in your packet, you have the planning commission meeting minutes from February 20th and March 19th. Um, Borough Council comments. We'll start with councilperson Stahl.
Nothing. Thank you. No comments from either.
Mark, I just have a question. Did, did Lisa receive the approved Parks and Rec minutes?
I don't think they got approved, did they?
We made the motion, but we accidentally didn't go on that. It's going to have to come back.
Okay, there you go. Thanks, Ed.
Um, I just wanted to let everyone know, um, last evening, the mayor, Mark, uh, Joanne and I attended the Main Street County Birds Association meeting. Mark was elected president of the Birds Association, so.
Congratulations.
Yes, and, uh, lots of good information. Um, we got information from the Pennsylvania Furniture Mission, which, um, helps people that are getting into hoes, helps them furnish their homes and everything. That was really good. So, yeah, and as Mark said, um, we attended the home blessing on, on South Fifth Street. That was really cool. It's good to see everything that we've been working for with the land bank for, you know, years come to fruition. So that was, that was definitely a good thing. And I think that is it. This evening, um, announcement of the next meeting at 7:00 PM on May 7th, council will hold a workshop. Tonight, we will, we will be adjourning to executive session to discuss personnel matters. But I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by councilperson Kaufman, second by councilperson Stahl to adjourn to executive session at 8:21 PM. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? You are adjourned. We got your signature signed.
Yes, we did that first, please. That would be great. For you gentlemen.
Well, I'm, I'm.
Try to do a statement. And then I'm going to act.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you.
How's that?
Yep.
Congratulations on the CSAB.
It's the county one, but yes.
No, we're. I want council to know what the direction is.
They're not the whole state.
Okay. And plus, we have the other part.
We definitely have, I'd like to do that first.
Yes, we definitely have that first. We have employee issue with the movement of the trucks. Only one? And then we have to talk about lards.
I don't do large errors. Tell them upfront. I don't need large.
Because we know the AV works. There it is now.
Okay.